All right, we're on.
Got a power light.
All right, thank you. Hold on. Is there an on button? We're trying to get the recording secretary thing on.
That I can do.
Oh, we're going. All right.
Did you work on one, it's another? I got it. Oh, okay.
Good evening and welcome to the September 26, 2024 zoning commission regular meeting here at 7:00 PM, held in room 133 of the town hall at 100 Pocono Road. If you'd all like to stand through the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, I'll have the members here tonight introduce themselves, starting from my left.
Gwen Arment, regular member.
Anthony Papucci, vice chairman.
Kurt Timmerman, chairman.
Sean Turner, secretary.
Greg Petrione.
And Greg Petrione, alternate. Sorry about that. Thank you, no problem. I'd just like the audience members to know tonight, there will be no back and forth. We're in closed deliberation, so there is no comment from the audience. I just want to make that clear for any of the public hearings, deliberations we have tonight. Fran, oh, just, let's see, Danny Fontana is absent this evening, who is an alternate. The zoning enforcement officer was feeling under the weather tonight, so we won't have our Z E O officers' report. So we'll push that to the next meeting on October 10th. We've got one piece of correspondence from the opinion letter from Attorney Beecher regarding Prince of Peace. And do you want to? Yeah, it's short. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, I don't have it.
I was gonna say, I don't have it.
And I'll just paraphrase, essentially, we don't have purview over what, how they do their deed, and we can't control any of that. So we did what we can do according to our regulations. Is someone? Yes, yes.
So we did, so since the church board did write to us as commission, and now we've asked the town attorney to weigh in, and I do agree with his position. I do think we should send, or maybe make a motion to authorize you to send a letter on behalf of the commission, saying that we agree with what Attorney Beecher has stated, therefore zoning will be taking no further action on this.
Well, actually, I can, I'll just have Attorney Beecher send the letter too. I think they're copied in, so they are well aware of our.
They did, but they took the time to write to the commission, and we're ultimately responsive. I just think that we, I don't think that, because sometimes we disagree with what the, with what legal counsel says to us, and I think that in this case, we agree.
Well, let's see, is there, you have a motion on the floor for that?
I'll make a motion to authorize the chairman to respond to the council president of Prince of Peace, adopting town attorney's, town attorney's position with respect to this matter.
All right, do we have a second?
A second.
All right, thanks, Tony. Any discussion on the motion to do that? I mean, seems a simple enough letter.
Straightforward.
All right. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None? No abstentions? Just before I go on, we're raising Greg Petrione as a voting member tonight. Oh, I'm sorry, do we have five? I'm sorry.
You have five?
No, I'm sorry. I forgot Matt's here, so we do have five. Sorry, Greg.
Okay.
All right. All right, moving on, the review of the minutes of the previous meeting, September 12, 2024. I'll accept a motion to approve them.
I make a vote to accept the meetings from September 12, 2024.
Do we have a second?
No, second.
Okay, thank you, Sean. Any corrections? I have a couple, but anybody saw any?
Just grammatically on page nine, my name is G R I M E apostrophe S H P S apostrophe in that case.
Okay, what line is that?
Line 416 on page nine.
Okay, thank you. On line, for me, on line 335, what is 8306, was supposed to be 8-30G. So that was a reference to the.
What line was that, Mr. Chair?
335. All right, any other corrections, anybody saw? All in favor of the amended motion, the, accepting the amended minutes? Minutes as amended.
Aye.
Aye. All right, is he unanimous? All right, next, we're going to continue public hearings, 5A, 100 Pocono Road. Application Z-24-42, brought by ourselves. This one, we had been putting off for quite some time. And I think, you know, we should start moving on this. I think we can go through a little tonight. Because the land use director, she's got to make a report on whether we are, how did you put it?
In compliance. Actually, Mr. Chair, if you prefer, we can always do it. I didn't realize we did have two meetings in October. I thought we only had one.
Oh, all right.
Excuse me, I also think we need Fran here for this, Kurt.
Yeah, we can, we can push this if the commission feels that way. Because, you know, I guess the only thing I would say is, I think the major one we had an issue, questions on, was the definition of kitchen. So if everybody thinks about that and brings some ideas about kitchen to the next meeting, then we can start discussing it.
Kurt, since we're now restricted by the 65 days, if you want to open this public hearing tonight, I don't see any problem with that, because we're.
Oh, yeah, I don't either, I don't, I don't have the script. No, we can open it next time. Well, I think we opened it already, didn't we?
I think you already opened the public hearing.
No, no, I don't think we did.
I think we opened it and continued immediately? But I'll look at the, I'll look at the video, and if we didn't, we'll open it next time.
Motion to postpone item 5A to October 10th.
All right.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Tony, thank you, Matt. Any discussion on the motion to continue to the next meeting of October 10th, 2024? No, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, is unanimous? All right, the next one is 6A, public hearing, 854 Federal Road, Z-24-51. We did get a letter.
Correct.
That, if you could read it into record, Tony?
It's from B L Architect Engineering and Lance Rivera to the zoning commission, Kurt Timmerman, chairman, 100 Pocono Road, Brookfield, Connecticut. It's in regards to the proposed multifamily resident development at 854 Federal Road in Brookfield, Connecticut. Application number Z 2451, excuse me. Dear Mr. Timmerman, on behalf of the application AR Building Company, Inc., we would like to request opening of public hearing for the above referenced project table. We're requesting a hearing to open, they've listed September 26th, to be postponed till October 24th, 2024. Sincerely, John Schmidt, project manager.
All right, thank you. In light of that, we'll accept a motion to.
I make a motion to postpone the public hearing for, I just lost it, Z-24-51. The AR Building Companies open. Oh, sorry, 854 Federal Road. The public hearing be scheduled or postponed till October 24th, 2024.
All right, thank you, Tony.
I'll second it, put a point of order on that. Our October 24th meeting is going to be at Brookfield High School, give the early voting.
If that's what happened, yeah, I know they were looking into it. All right, fine, you're seconded, Matt? Anybody?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion on that motion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, unanimous. All right, the next one is 7A, 100 Pocono Road, application Z-24-43. We're in deliberations on this. This is the moratorium on multifamily applications. I took the liberty of typing up a draft resolution of what it could look like for us to vote on. We can vote on it tonight if we want, if we, so, two things. One, in this draft resolution, essentially, it's the same language, except I removed the, one of the reasons for this as school population, because as the data shows, school population is actually going down, not up. So it's not a good rationale for having this. But the rest of them are true. Sewer capacity, we heard about that. Water capacity for firefighting, we heard the fire chief talk about that. Emergency services. And of course, the update of the plan of conservation development is ongoing. In fact, we had our first kickoff meeting Tuesday. The planning commission had that and invited myself for the zoning commission, the chairs of the E D C and conservation as a start. And then we met the consultants for that. So the other change I made was added, because this came up, added a definition for dwelling comma multifamily to see dwelling multiple above, so the two are equivalent, because we have many references to multifamily dwellings, but we have no actual definition for it, though we did have a definition for multiple dwelling, which is the same thing. So that should close that discrepancy. And the other, the only other thing I did was actually put dates down. This is just a placeholder. It would be for a year, starting October 12, 2024, and going for a year to October 11, 2025. October 12 is a date picked to be beyond the 15-day appeal period. So we don't get, you know, if nobody appeals, then it's like a day or two after that to start. So, so any comments?
Kurt, I want to thank you and Attorney Beecher for taking the time to do this. And I want to thank the people that spoke at the two public hearings we had on this, both August 8th and September 12, I believe it was. And I don't have any problem with the language per se, and I do think you hit all the points that we heard during the public hearings on this. As far as the date is concerned, I have a couple of thoughts on this. So some people talked about at the public hearing, making it a permanent moratorium. Well, you can't do that with a moratorium, obviously. It wouldn't, it wouldn't stand up one, and two, a moratorium is not meant to be permanent. So there's a big question, though, as to how far you could go. And there is some authority on it, although I don't have the name of the cases, that a five-year moratorium would be excessive. I think our volunteer fire departments and our EMS would be highly in support of that. But I don't think if we were challenged, that we would, that the town of Brookfield would survive on that. So I have two thoughts on the date. My first thought is, I think we need to do something that is bold. And by that, I mean responsive to the many comments that we heard during public hearing, but also realistic of the fact of what our role is as a commission. So I could support up to a three-year moratorium going into 2027. I think that that puts it right on the line. I think that that was the maximum that you probably could go with surviving the legal challenge. But I think, based on all of the data that we heard from Greg Dombowski and from our first responders, and from what the public wants, that that date would be appropriate. So I would support a date going as far as 2027. If we did not go that far, I would at least support something that gets us in, well into 2026. And the reason for that is, is that come the first Monday in December of 2025, we will become the Planning and Zoning Commission. The planning conservation development will be underway, and then we'll be, need to establish how we are as a new combined commission at that point, whether it's us or whether it's some other folks. But there needs to be time for this moratorium to be in effect into the new Planning and Zoning Commission when it's combined. So I, the earliest I could support a date on this is March 1 of 2026. That's 90 days into the, into the plan of conserva, into the combining of the commissions. Or I could support going as far as October of 2027. So that's my thoughts. But the rest of the language, you know, Kurt, I really think what you came up with here is spot on.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, Matt. Anybody else have some comments?
I do.
Oh, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I agree with Matt. And also, we are going to see a lot more building that has been approved, and people haven't seen it yet.
Yeah.
So I think it's a good idea to postpone this for a while. So I like the three years.
Gwen, would you go with 2027, though?
I would.
All right, well, you know, we, yeah, and anybody else have?
I actually agree with the both of them. I think with what's, what's coming up, that's already been approved, that haven't started yet, I think extend that to at least 2027 would be a good idea.
Let me ask the town attorney, what is your, I'm asking Attorney Beecher, Matt. What's your opinion on, is that going to be excessive? Will the state look askance at us?
Typically, you don't see moratoriums for more than a year, or maybe a little bit more. So I agree with Matt's initial statement. Five years would be pushing it. Three might be a little, little much. I couldn't tell you if you're right or wrong if you went to two years.
Yeah, you know, one thought is, and we did this with the cannabis, is that we could always, well, first, let me lay the groundwork. The reason for one year or another year after that, if we re-up it, like the cannabis one, is because the P O C D is being changed. And the P O C D right now, November, is the projected date for it to be adopted, according to the consultants. But there needs to be time after that to fashion some new zoning regs based on what the P O C D now says. So that would argue for a longer, a longer moratorium, or re-upping it when it came back, so in October, to have another meeting, or actually before that, with public hearings and stuff, to extend it for at least another year, so we have at least two years. So we could do that, because some of the length of it is predicated on, well, the P O C D and, and, you know, putting new rules into place. So to your point, Matt, yes, the new planning and zoning will be on board, and they will be tasked with actually coming up with new regs. So they do have to get comfortable with that role and, and the new P O C D that they've just inherited.
And I think, and I think, given the totality of the circumstances, you know, to make an important change, you have to take, you have to make a bold statement here, and I think that that's what the public asks us for. And that's why, in this case, when you consider the combining of the commissions, the P O C D, and what we heard from the public, I think, I am comfortable in this case. I don't think I could have said this previously on a commission. I am comfortable going with an October of 2027 date. I do think that we've got, if it was challenged, I think that we would have, I think that we would be able to certainly make the case, when you look at everything that's happened, when you look at everything that's been approved, when you look at what we heard from the public, when you look at the combining of the commissions, and when you look at the, when you look at the P O C D, when you have that totality, the circumstances, I'm fully comfortable with the three-year here. So what I'm going to do is, I'm actually going, we'll get it on the floor, and of course, it can be amended. I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Well, that way, we have a little more discussion. I want to hear from.
We can have discussion after we put it on, and then we can amend the motion if we want to.
Yeah, why don't we, let even have more discussion, then fashion a motion, we get some consensus.
But I would not go any earlier than what I said initially, which is October, March 1 of 2026, because that's 90 days into the new combined P N Z.
Okay. What is the, I want to hear from Attorney Beecher first.
Yeah, I was going to say that based on what you just said in terms of the timeframes, you would certainly be justified in going beyond just for one year to accomplish all those things and have time. So if you went for a year and a half, I think that's defensible, not only for the reasons that underlie the whole idea of a moratorium to begin with, but for the reasons about being able to finish the P O C D, get it approved, and then have the new commission react to the new P O C D and adopt regulations that address some of the concerns that would lead to a moratorium.
Oh, but let me split the baby in half, then. How about we go to December 1, 2026? That's a clean one year into the new commission. And I think that that would more than uphold.
What do you say?
I would prefer to go to 27.
I like October 27.
I would say one year past the combining of commissions, which is December 1, 2025. This would go to December 21st, December 1, 2026.
What do you, Tony?
I've got, I don't disagree with Matt. Timeframes, I think, are interpreted, we could fudge that. But my bigger concern is, because of the capacity water and sewer, and what's already been approved, what sort of overage potentially do those developments have? And is there a knock effect because of that? If, if, what's, and I'm making this up, because I don't know what has been fully approved to the point. If we are over 15% between water and sewer off of normal capacity, that's going to trigger potentially the moratorium, because we're going to be at 100% or 90% capacity. So that's, that's going to force the moratorium regardless, because.
Yeah, that's going to be on top of ours.
Correct, which is the reason why.
That's, that's taken into consideration, Tony, but I mean, that's not, that's not the only basis for it that way.
No, no, agreed, but again, where we've actually called out sewer and water capacity, again, these are aspirational numbers until the actual property is built, and we know what the use case is going to be. So again, I don't disagree with your dates. Whether it's December 2026 goes into 2027, what I'm trying to do is figure out what would be the, again, what's the adjustable amount to not be excessive, but at least extend out to where some of the questions could actually be answered.
Yeah, and not to be excessive to trigger someone in the state to look at us.
Correct.
I mean, so to me, I, December 1, 2026, I like your idea of the new commission has had a year to look at it. And, you know, sometimes if you get new people on the commission, it takes some time to ramp up.
And it could be extended in December of 2026.
Yes, yeah, seeing how we are.
If I might, not only that, I'm going to go back to not having seen what's going to be built. And I think with the reaction from the public, that when they start seeing what's being built, and once it gets built, they're going to say, the moratorium's over already?
Well, we have.
Might have a real concern about that.
Sure, we, we have a, we have a year and whatever that is, over a year, almost two years. Actually, that is over two years.
Yes.
A year, it's actually, two years, two months.
For them to see that and to hear back. And if we decide to have another hearing on extending that, then we'll have a public hearing, and they can see that. Yeah. But that can, at that point, we'll see what happens. You know, by that time, we'll have new rules. Because the public might feel that way, but the public is not the state who looks at the legality of that sort of thing.
Correct, and perception, again, this becomes perception. The people that moved to Brookfield within the last year see all of this, and may have lived in Brookfield 10, 20, 30 years, all their lives. Again, what they're seeing now, they're seeing the end state. They did not see the ramp up in the years of getting it to that point.
Yeah.
And that becomes the problem. And again, that's the reason why I absolutely agree with the December 2026. I think that's a good straw man, because it puts out enough time for the new commissions to spin up and kind of get in sync with everything. It addresses whatever has been approved currently. And again, going forward, we've protected certain elements of this. Because again, this is for the multifamily. So if a business or manufacturing sites, they want to come into the town, we've now just ensured some of the capacity has actually been earmarked for that growth, as opposed to what's being built out.
Right.
And again.
And while I might personally prefer a 2027 date, the 2026 date can be re-upped in December of 2027. So that, that sort of mitigates, I guess, that concern that I have. And I do feel, given the totality, the circumstances, again, with what is already approved and has not been built, with what has been built, and what we heard from the public, as well as the combining of the commission and the P O C D, I think, I think that December 1 of 2026 date would be ironclad if it was challenged, so.
All right.
Now, now I think I can make some motion that I wanted to make, please, so.
Oh, wait, Gwen has one more thing to say.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Gwen?
I just have a legal question for, for Attorney Beecher, on whether or not we would, you say nothing in this rationale to combine the P N Z? So would you want to add that to the rationale before voting it forward?
Yeah, that might be a good, yeah.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, I, I agree.
And that effective date, just so everybody's aware, is the first Monday in December of '25, which is December 1.
And the combining of.
The combining of the commissions.
And the ongoing, and the ongoing P O C D.
Yes, planning and zoning. So just add another bullet point to reasons, find that the combining of planning and zoning commissions.
And you put it, you want to put it in parentheses, which is effective 12/1/25.
12/1/25. Well, that's where I need good words here.
Do you have, do you have the date that the P O C D is due, Laura?
The P O C?
It's due in March 2026. I don't remember the exact date off the top of my head.
That's right, March 20, yeah.
No later than March 31 of 2026.
Yeah.
All right, so I will, so now I think I got it. I will make the motion.
I just had one more question.
No.
No? Does that affect what Greg talked about last session? The businesses that want to come in, are planning to come in?
This saves, saves, yeah, well, it affects it in a good way, because we're sort of saving some of the sewer capacity.
For them.
For, they talked about having a balance between multifamily development and other types of commercial. And so they're afraid the people do regular commercial development, that the multifamily, which uses more, will use it up, and then everybody shut down. There will be no commercial development that needs sewer.
Right.
And that's, that's an issue, too.
Yes.
Then our grant list doesn't go up either. I'm just trying to come up with good words, because ideally, I'd like to vote on this, and then I can make a clean copy. On the language, I can make a clean copy.
You've got it, I think. I mean, you, Kurt, you've done a great job with this as it is. I'm not arguing substance with what you've come up with at all. So I'm going to make a motion to approve application Z-2443. It's 100 Pocono Road, it's the town of Brookfield, I wish the zoning commission is an application. This is a moratorium on multifamily applications, and the changes that I will make to the draft document are as follows. The expiration of said moratorium will be on December 1, 2026, and we will add a bullet in section 4 dash, in that section right above that, 4.4, to consider the combining of the planning and zoning commissions, which will take effect 12/1/25. That's one year before the moratorium expires. That's my motion.
All right.
I second it.
Thank you, Tony. Any more discussion?
Do you need an effective date of that?
And the effective date's already written down, it's October 12. He's just changing the.
Okay, I just want to make sure I.
Yes, the effective date is October 12, 2024.
That's the earliest it could be, right, Kurt?
Yes, to get beyond the appeal date.
Right.
Okay, and we had a second, no more, any more discussion? All right, all in favor? Aye. That was unanimous? All right, thank you. And I will, I'll clean up.
And thank you again, Kurt, and Tom and Laura, for what you worked on with this. Thank you very much. I think, I do think, Lan, you sort of sent out a press release on this, because we did hear from a lot of people on this.
Yeah, all right. All right, the next application to do deliberations on is 7B, 202 Candlewood Lake Road, Z-24-38. Now, we had a call from the attorney, Gomes, about refusal of yourself. How do you feel about that?
I feel that I did not say anything, and that it was a public hearing, and my husband can say whatever he wants. Doesn't mean that I am affected by it, and I feel that I can be impartial.
All right, I understood, understand that, you know, those two incidents. All right, I understood that, understand that, you know, those two incidents, um, of allegations, you know, improper renting and harassment, uh, show evidence or the appearance of bias and so, um.
Well, the renting, um.
We're not going to relitigate this part, I'm just saying.
No, I understand, but, but it was, it was resolved.
It was resolved because, yes, but it was the, so, you know, when, when that happens, they might think, oh, she's biased. That's why I'm saying the appearance of bias.
Well, I would refuse my.
So that was, it's your decision, but.
I, I just gave you my decision.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you. All right, uh, so we're going to discuss, uh, this, I, um, you know, just, just so you're not being raised up tonight. But you can certainly watch. Um, it's a different type of application, as we know, it's got different standards. Uh, the previous ones are based solely on our own zoning regulations and what to consider, whereas this application has federal A D A law to consider. So, um, you know, we heard from the attorney Gomes and we also heard from, uh, our attorney Beecher on the opinion about what the three or four pillars, there was a difference. Uh, and that the, the pillars are that the applications, the applicants are disabled, um, that the accommodation requested is reasonably necessary to accommodate that disability, in this case, the couple of things, extra parking spaces and a sign. And that the modification will not fundamentally or unreasonably alter the, or undermine the nature or purpose of the zoning regulations. And so outside of this, there are no other considerations. For example, um, the impact of the neighborhood as a whole cannot be a consideration. Uh, Kurt, am I stating that correct, attorney Beecher?
That's correct, because under the third pillar, we're just trying to determine whether making this accommodation, which while would modify the special permit, it's not technically a modification of the special permit itself.
Yeah.
And so the third pillar is whether or not this particular modification to allow the accommodation sets all the zoning regulations out there ahead, which my advice to you is it does not. So you really want to be applying it, of course, too.
Okay. Oh, uh, do we have a microphone, uh, for next, next time we ask this? Because I, you know how I feel about microphones.
I don't understand that.
It's federal law. Well, you know, it's, it's a.
How does it, how does it not change the special permit?
Because they're, because it's federal law, saying you make an accommodation, they're not changing the special permit underneath it.
Kurt, I don't need to interrupt you, but, uh, is, is attorney Beecher still there?
Yes.
Yeah, we're going to get him a microphone, that way you can hear him too.
I, I had a question for him, that's all.
Oh, or we have this up.
I'm sure I have his table.
Is he mic'd yet?
Oh, is that microphone on?
Sorry.
The red light will come on when it's on. The little button to the.
Red light's on.
Okay.
Matt, can you hear him?
Yeah, I, I, I can, yeah, so my, my question, my question is, just thinking forward and everything, and again, um, we got cited in, in attorney Beecher's letter quite a bit about the A D A and everything. I mean, if the commission were to turn down this application and we were to wind up in, in United States, of course, the District of Connecticut, what, uh, what do we face as a commission, attorney Beecher?
I haven't looked into the depths of that, whether there's fines, civil fines and penalties involved as well. But, um, it'd be considerable expense for the town just to defend such a case in federal district court.
That litigation would not be, uh, for lack of a better term, curma funded, would it?
I doubt it.
And what's that, what's that term mean?
Uh, curma is the insurance carrier for the town.
Oh, oh.
Matt's question was whether or not the insurance for the town recovered the defense of the approach to the town, higher amounts of council, that could be.
And, uh, and, and maybe you can answer Gwen's, um, question on how does, how is it that it doesn't, uh, change the special permit? This particular application?
Well, the, the A D A, the American Disabilities Act, uh, actually, in these circumstances, preempts it all, so. So in other words, the A D A would take precedence over it, as long as it wasn't beyond the pale. In other words, asking for accommodation for one person to require a whole, the whole residential family, multifamily building to be built in a rescue zone. But, uh, it does, it does take precedence.
Okay.
It requires, doesn't it require accommodation, but it doesn't give the entity a blanket permission?
Well, what, you know, my suggestion is that when we discuss this tonight, um, and discuss whether or not to allow all or some or none of the requested accommodations, uh, if you should decide that some are true, uh, you should think about whether or not you want to modify the requests. Add more pockets, please? Reduce the number of pockets, please, reduce the size of the sign. Uh, and if your consensus is to allow an accommodation, it would be my suggestion that, uh, Laura and I, uh, work with the chairman to draft a resolution for your review before you actually vote and decide, uh, permanently. The idea tonight would be to have a consensus from all of you as to how to feel and whether you want to approve any and if so, whether you want to modify any. And I would suggest you consider a sunset provision, which goes through what you were talking about, which is that if there's no longer an entity using or owning the building, it requires this accommodation, then it ceases. And, uh, and also consider, uh, an annual certification that comes from the tenant and the owner, certifying that they still have the need for this accommodation.
So said accommodations being the forty nine, what they're asking for is forty nine spaces total, a sign that's sixteen square feet, um, and some lighting that they had there. So that, those are the basic ones. Um, so I, I think we should see, um, discuss, you know, what we want to do about those three main things. And what we want to end up with and get a consensus on just how much or how little or, you know, that sort of thing. Uh, always keeping in mind that, you know, we are satisfying the accommodation that they're asking for based on their need. You know, I, if the, I'm sure if the, uh, if it gets sued and we go into a lawsuit and they look at it, that's what they'll be doing. That's what the judge will be doing, they'll be arguing.
They'll be doing, they'll be doing what, Kurt, what did you say, Kurt?
Oh, that, if, if we have to go to a lawsuit, uh, I'm sure there'll be argued that we didn't accommodate enough, it wasn't enough accommodation. You know, that's, that's what we're trying to come up with. Do we have enough accommodation?
And the danger in those lawsuits is that there's allegations that will include intentional discrimination against the entity because you failed to give them an accommodation. You know, if you shave off three parking spaces, maybe not so much, but you put a good reason.
And, and Tom, furthermore, if, if you've mentioned that you didn't think that this would become a funded, and I, I tend to agree with you, what are the chances that we would have to pay plaintiff's legal fees i- if, if we lost?
That's always a, that's always, um, a likelihood in a civil rights or, or discrimination lawsuit in federal court.
Uh, do anybody have any more questions for the attorney at this point?
Well, I just had one more thing.
Oh, sure.
For the chairman.
Yep.
That, uh, if you are going to grant one or all of your accommodations, you're going to need to just make the findings about the three pillars that the chairman talked about earlier. Uh, obviously, we've put those in a draft resolution anyway, and if you just discussed earlier and then addressed at the time, the document was that resolution, but go through the, the sort of the checkbox that you need to check all the boxes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Tom. Um, all right, um, just a couple, uh, pieces of da- data I have. Because as we heard, they have, the number of members they have is approximately a hundred thirty four. So that was eighty at the Sockles, fifty at the, uh, V F W, but there was a twenty overlap, so twenty gets taken away, plus twenty four in the auxiliary. So that's how I ended up with a hundred thirty four. Uh, they had, um, have an affidavit saying they have, uh, it looks like around seventy disabled. Actually, I never asked what the overlap was on that, but I don't, I don't think that matters too much, so, um, because the numbers are still high there. So, that's, that's what we're looking at on numbers. And then the other thing I, I, is similar, you know, when I, we talked about the federal government and, and the attorney talked about it, superseding our local regs, it's very similar to eight thirty G, affordable state, uh, Connecticut, uh, housing regs. They override our zoning regs, just like the federal government, A D A overrides them. So it's, uh, very, uh, very similar and it's like essentially boxes it in on certain considerations. It's, you know, it's unfortunate because the neighborhood will be affected, I, you know, it has, it has been affected, but that's the way it is.
Can I add to that, Kurt?
Sure.
Uh, so, yeah, so this is the situation where I don't like the commission to say, we can't do anything about it. I, I grant the commission's approach, be, what can we do about it?
Yeah.
Um, and in, in that, in that case, I mean, when faced with, with federal law, I always hold the, uh, the miracle on thirty fourth street test. A branch of the federal government says, says this, and then you think about the consequences down the road. I don't mean you're afraid of being sued, but you think if you, if you are in that situation, how, how you're going to prevail. And the fact that it's not, uh, curma funded or insurance funded, as well as the, uh, you'd likely have to play, pay plaintiff's fees and costs as well.
Mm-hmm.
So what can we do? So I do not see a basis where this application could be denied. That said, what can we do? We could stipulate the, the sign and the lighting. We could stipulate a couple of the things that you talked about and everything. So I think the key to, uh, addressing this application as a zoning commission is to figure out what stipulations we can put in and what stipulations are, are fair to put it in this case. I, I, I don't see a basis to deny this application, nor do I see a basis to modify the, um, yet. I don't see a basis to modify the number of, uh, the numbers that they have asked for in this application at this point, given, given what, uh, attorney Beecher has opined.
Mm-hmm. Um, all right.
I think this is a stipulation, such, this is, this is a stipulation discussion more than anything else.
Yeah, and, uh, the original proposal, by the way, uh, the sign was thirty two square feet. So, a- and the, um, and the lighting, you know, the light, lighting trespass on the neighbor's yard. And they heard us talk about that, so they, and the next meeting, they came back and cut the sign in half to sixteen. Um, versus, by the way, six square feet is what's allowed in that zone, just so you know. Okay, what's allowed, what, then they came from thirty two down to sixteen. Uh, they changed the lighting plan, so it, it, there's no trespass or intrusion onto neighboring property, which is basically what our regs are. And then the, uh, times were eight to ten, eight in the morning to ten at night, except for setup or cleanup crews, an extra hour on each side, but only activated by a motion sensor. So, in other words, they won't be on all the time. Uh, the parking, um, the, the only, um, change they made there was to mark thirteen of the handicap spots. They, they marked it on a map we had and they're basically the ones closest to the building, which, you know, that makes sense. My, when I look at the parking map, the only thing I see that is, is, looks like a safety problem for me is like the three spots that are closest to the road. Because, um, there was testimony of how, you know, traffic, there's a lot of traffic on Candlewood Lake Road, trying to turn in and, um, and I'm afraid these three are so close to the way the driveway is that someone could be backing out and someone could be coming in, especially for meetings, there's going to be a lot of traffic. And that there could be an accident right there. The reason I say just three, that the fourth, fifth and sixth line up with the ones across the way. And they are well within the twenty five foot border, because normally that, in that zone, we have twenty five feet from any parking to the road itself. And for safety, for this very same safety, uh, issue. But that's, that's my feel on it, like, I think those three, for safety's sake, should be taken out.
I think, I think that that's a valid concern, Kurt, and, and I would normally agree that you hit the nail right on the head, however. Um, in this case, with the public hearings, I mean, we had a lot of input written, we had a lot of input orally.
Mm-hmm.
And some of the most important words that we heard, I think, were from our first responders. We heard from the chiefs of the fire departments, we heard from the E M S chief, we heard from the police department.
Yeah.
And because they didn't see what you just raised as a concern, that's the kind of, that's the kind of, uh, basis that I would say would give me that concern, but because they did not, uh, voice that as a concern, I, I'm less inclined to focus on that and stipulations than I would ordinarily be. Um, as I said, we did hear from every branch of first response in this application, so therefore, I'm inclined not to, not to be as concerned with that in this case.
All right.
You know what, I, I'm going to disagree with Matt, I am going to be concerned with those spots. And the reason being is, we all would concede Candlewood Lake Road. There are people that drive fast on it, because of the intersection, the T, just south of this property, and the adjacent properties got huge fencing and walls. Those spots pulling out, backing out or pulling out, again, however you want to look at it, I, I think that that is potentially an accident, because you're coming around the turn or people making the right turn onto Candlewood Lake Shore Road, if they don't see the cars or the cars aren't able to pick them up because of the hill, that, that's an accident. And I don't think anybody would have picked that up, because, again, in talking about this, now it's knowing the area, knowing the traffic and all the other stuff around it, and the encroaching properties around it. There are, the property directly across, there are white fences.
Yeah.
Around them, so there are multiple blocks or view obstructions in that area that I, I, I think that, that should be looked at.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, because I, I, the queuing, there's not much queuing that you can do.
Correct.
When you pull in.
Correct.
Uh, for, if you had those spots gone, you'd have at least two, maybe three cars you can chew.
Mm-hmm.
Into there, but, um, so, uh, this is, this is what I was looking at.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To, something Tony said about pulling out, people drive fast on Candlewood Lake Road, that is true. Um, but anybody pulling out of, if, with the fences here on that property and exactly what you're talking about, it's going to create a blind spot whether the spots are there or not.
Agreed.
So, you know, I don't see an issue with leaving the spots there, because they think there's, the blind spot's going to be there regardless. Because without, um, I think there're pine trees and then there's, um, fencing or something like that.
There is, but, but, again, I.
And the concern is on entry.
Uh, unfortunately, you can't deliberate with us.
Okay, I apologize.
Yeah, no problem. But, but, to, again, to, to make that point, the spot, the problem becomes the people pulling out. Again, the blind spots will be there, but pulling out, as you pull out, looking down the road or being able to see what's coming towards you, becomes the, a bigger, I think, a bigger challenge.
My concern was them backing out here and someone coming in from the road.
That too.
Yeah.
But that's, but that's what I'm seeing, because of, this is so close to the road. Again, you've got walls and you've got obstructions, I, I'm just, again, that's what I said, even across here. And though the map doesn't show it, you also have the elbow hill extension coming this way as well.
Yep.
So backing out, pulling in, or adjusting, pulling out to go left or right, again, the view would be obstructed and I think that that's a challenge. Now, you could change things to it, not that, again, put a s- streetlight, put stop signs. Again, there's a lot of different ways that you can get around it, but I do think that those spots would definitely be something that I would consider potentially moving, adjusting.
Stop sign where?
I, 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 I tend to agree with Sean on this, because to me, this is not going to reduce the speed of which people drive on Candlewood Lake Road. It's not going to change the blind spot. And again, you know, i- if first responders had told us, we're dealing with, if you do this, you're going to deal with a runaway animal here, I could, I could maybe see it, but, but we didn't get that feedback from first response. In fact, we got support from what was submitted and, you know, I, I, I really put, especially when we're looking at things in application. In fact, we got support from what was submitted, and, you know, I, I, I really put, especially when we're looking at things in application from a safety standpoint, I have to give them a lot of credibility. So, they're the ones that have to deal with the situation.
Yeah, well, I, I don't think the first responders would, uh, it would be the traffic engineer which said, yeah, the, and I agree that the circulation on the site is great, I just, I'm just concerned about this first three. Someone pulling out, backing out, and maybe the, you know, the older people, or even, you know, people don't have the attention or, um, that they normally would have, going in or coming out, and the reaction times, and even me, I would be hesitant to back out of there, worried that someone's gonna be pulling in right there when I'm backing out, and I'll get rear-ended, 'cause they're trying to get off Candlewood Lake Road, because it's, you know, there's people tailgating and stuff, and they're gonna pull in quickly, and there's not enough time for someone pulling out to get out of the way. That, that's my, that's my concern.
Is it gonna be any more quickly than it is today, though, Kurt? I, I don't disagree with you.
Well, there's no, there's no parking spaces there. Today, there's no parking spaces.
Right, right.
There's nobody backing out into the, the drive while you're doing it. That's, that's my concern.
Correct, that's it, correct. Like, like I said, I, I, I'm not saying to get rid of them fully, I just, the location of those, I definitely would question.
Well, I'm looking at it as going from thirteen to what you want, forty-six. That's a huge change, in my opinion.
So, the-
That's a huge change, because-
It's not the change we're looking for, it's the accommodation of what their need is. Regardless of how much of a change it is, you have to look at it. It doesn't matter.
Creating more parking is intensifying the use.
That's, has no bearing on our decision here, no bearing. If it was a Brookfield zoning application, and it was just Brookfield zoning, then it would have, uh, then we could consider it, but we cannot. Not that, because it's federal law.
It's federal law, but doesn't-
Those are the only three things we can consider. Making an accommodation, is it reasonable?
Is it reasonable?
Have we done enough? Are they asking for too much for the number of disabled they have to be accommodated?
Well, I think, I think we also have a responsibility to the town.
We can, I, as I specifically asked, can we consider that, and the answer is no, we cannot.
That's not a-
Because federal government-
That's not, that's not, it's not part of the consideration of the state, nor can it be.
Yeah, this is a federal, this is a federal, um, uh, application of ADA. And it's unfortunate, you know, because before, when this come in front of us, you know, we considered things from the town view and our zoning regulation, our P O C D and everything else, but that cannot be considered on this application.
Kurt?
Yeah.
Could, could, could we get some consensus on something else, maybe we just change the subject for a minute while we think about it? Could we get some consensus on this, on what kind of a sign stipulation we want on this? Because I think we, I think we're probably not too far apart on this, Commissioner.
Yeah, yeah, I s- I see what you're saying, so-
Why don't we talk about that for a second?
Allowed as six, um, they have requested sixteen for an accommodation. Now, in my feeling, as you've been there once, you know, you know where it is. So, I, I don't know if the sign is, you know, it's not for the members, the members know where it is, so I'm not sure why that isn't accommodation for the members of, of the place. I can see marking it just like, you know, six, six square foot, but maybe that's kinda small when you have two different organizations on there. Uh, what's your, does anybody have a feeling on the size?
I, I think the size is, look, they made the accommodation from what they had to what they are going to. Again, I do think if it's gonna be both the V F W and the SOCO.
Yeah.
That could dictate it, if it's only gonna be SOCO or V F W. Again, I would go, I would a- advocate for a smaller sign, I don't have a problem with the sign itself.
So, it's like, and I'm not sure it's gonna be square, four by four, but it's gonna be something like that.
Correct.
So, all the stipulations go out the window, that were there?
Yes.
All the stipulations go out the window.
That would include the sign too, this is federal law, accommodation for it.
But they already came back and, and shrunk the sign, so to speak.
Yes.
So, I, I mostly thought, yeah, with, with the sign as it stands right now.
As they came back with, you mean?
Yeah.
Didn't they say something about illumination when they came back, too?
They weren't gonna illuminate the sign.
Yeah, that's what they said.
Correct, it, it's just gonna be a, a-
They were not going to illuminate the sign.
That's correct.
It's just gonna be a sign that's there.
Yeah. I, I guess, in the end analysis, sixteen square feet is not gigantic. I don't have a, I don't have a problem with that either.
You're, you're not putting a billboard on Candlewood Lake Road?
No, no, no. So, I, I think at least four of us, I, I don't know how you feel about the sign size, but the, I think the four of us have, you know, sixteen square feet, that's fine, non-illuminated.
People have gotten in and out of there all these years.
I know, I know.
Well, I don't understand.
I, I would, I would imagine this is for any new V F W members or SOCOs who've never been to the place before.
But who's, who's the owner?
The owner is, uh, the SOCOs, SOCO clubs the owners.
Yep.
SOCOs does own it?
Yes. And they have a lease to the V F W, the V F W uses it, uh, in a lease with them. And, uh, V F W has first right of, um, refusal when they, if they choose to purchase it.
Right.
Yes, but then, then it reverts back, doesn't it?
No, well, I asked specifically the attorney on that question about reverting on change of ownership, and that's illegal. So, it's similar to, as he said, you know, it's not, well, the stipulations and the special permit goes with the land and the property, not with who's inside of it. So, so that's why that can't be a valid stipulation. Perhaps if they had gone to the, I don't know if they went to attorney back in nineteen eighty-nine when they wrote their stipulations, but, but that one in particular can't be, can't be applied.
We're not really gonna solve that.
Just to clarify, just to clarify, I think, uh, what the chairman's talking about is the stipulation that it's in the original special permit, except for the change of ownership. That is, and that's a really, um, stipulation in a special permit, because like you said, it does run with the law, variants of it run with the law, but in this case, you would wanna have some kind of a sunset provision, so that it doesn't run with the law, and it only goes for as long as the accommodation is needed.
So it's a layer, that, this ADA accommodation is a layer that can be peeled back when it's no longer needed.
But it's basically for perpetuity.
No.
Is the sign, is, is the sign issue we just talked about officially part of the ADA or not?
They put it as a, uh, to accommodate their members, so they can locate the place so they can drive in. Yeah. Uh, akin to, I suppose, a, a wheelchair ramp or something like that, or ADA bathrooms.
I was just asking about the sign being, yeah, but it's not.
I mean, I, I don't, I, I'm okay with the sign at that size, illum- non-illuminated.
Me too, I agree, but I agree with what Tony said.
As far as the lighting goes, I mean, that's what we normally want. We don't want, you know, light intrusion on the neighboring property, so they pull that in.
Yeah, and they made the stipulations, they would do motion sensors, timers on it, the lights would be set up that way.
Yeah.
I think, I, I, I think eleven is a little late for seven days a week.
Uh, no, it's not seven days a week, only if someone's there, only if someone's cleanup crew. Uh, everybody's gotta leave by ten, but if they have someone, you know, the, the five people that have been chosen, and got the short straw to clean up after everybody, then the lights would go out at ten until someone walks out to their car or-
The music'd go off.
Yeah, so a motion sensor, so they wouldn't be on.
I have one across the street from me, it's horrible.
Yeah. Well, it shouldn't trespass, trespass into your house, so you gotta-
But thank God I don't sleep for it.
You should talk to Fran about that. 'Cause that's illegal. So that, they, their lights cannot, you know, they gotta be, you, zero cut off, they can't have light that spills onto the property. Even our zoning regs don't allow you to see the source of the light in the actual light, because of glare and stuff. Especially for residential. So that's what they, they hewed to.
So this is not residential anymore?
The land is still residential, the use is, is, uh, a, a gathering place, a club. That's allowed in the zone, and that's why it was allowed back in eighty-nine when the zoning commission. I mean, it started back in eighty-eight when the Z B A gave a, a large variance, but that's when it started. In ni- eighty-nine, the zoning commission had to give, you know, based on the variance, had to approve it, and they proved it was stipulation, similar to what we're doing here, but this is a little different.
How, how far apart, how far apart are we as a commission here? That's what I'm trying to figure out at this point. I, I, I don't know that we are.
I don't think we're that far apart, I mean, I think-
My only concern is the number of parking spaces.
Yeah.
It's not.
It's a lot for that particular space.
So you have to look at if-
I mean, it'd be a compromise.
There's not a basis, there's not a basis in the regulations, nor is there a basis to challenge the federal statutes on that issue. You might have a safety basis, the one that Kurt and Tony talked about, Sean and I don't agree with. But the number of parking spaces thing is, we're, we're not gonna get around that, this, this is gonna happen. This is gonna happen, no matter what happens here.
That's based on having around seventy or so, uh, handicap, disability.
That's gonna happen.
And so that's where their calculation comes down to forty-nine or forty, or whatever we end up with. So, you can't-
It's based on seventy people.
Approximately, 'cause that's what they, uh, claimed, that's what they had an affidavit.
Seventy.
Seventy disabled people.
Right.
Disabled, that's not the whole membership, the whole membership's a hundred and thirty-four. So you can't say how much it's increased, it has nothing to do with it. It has to be, the number that we decide on has got to be, i- is, is that a reasonable accommodation for the number of handicapped or disabled people they have, not handicapped, disabled?
And given the, given the ADA, and given the fact that we would not be upheld, and given the fact that we wouldn't be funded by insurance, given the fact that we'd have to pay the plaintiff's legal fees in a case like this, I think we gotta get off of the, the, the discussion about the, about the number of spaces, and we gotta get on to the special stipulations and figure out how we're gonna make this work here.
Uh, yeah, I, I agree, but except for, I think those three shouldn't be there, but, you know, I'm, I'm proposing forty-six. Take the three closest to the road.
Yeah, and I'm, and I would-
I don't see, I, I don't see, and again, I don't disagree with you, Kurt, on that, but, again, we did not hear from first response on that subject. And to me, if the, the, if, if what you're saying is correct, and I'm not disagreeing with it, but, to me, if what you're saying is correct, first response would've waited, waited on that exact issue, and they did not.
Well, I, I would say the police would've, you know, they're the traffic, uh, authority in town. You know, they're talking sightlines and everything else, that, they're not con- they didn't concentrate on how the parking lot, the only person who concentrated on the parking lot was the traffic engineer. Who looked at, uh, it was good circulation, I, I can't disagree with that. And, and it is good to have circulation, so you're always pulling out, you're not backing out onto federal, uh, to Candlewood Lake Road. So you're always pulling out, my only concern is-
I wanted the right mind to back out on the Candlewood Lake Road.
Well, that, sometimes that was the only thing you could do, the way it's fashioned out.
Well, and, and for those, and for those three spots, again, those three spots in particular, you have to back out, even if you follow the flow with the one-way traffic to go all the way around.
You're getting close to the entrance.
You still have to get close to the entrance, and if somebody is pulling into the property and doesn't see that, again, that becomes the gap. That's why I said, these three spots, look, if they wanna find other locations on the property, whether we keep the spots or not, the location of these three spots in particular, are what I have a problem with.
Yeah. Uh, so, let's, let's put the number aside, and why don't I read some possible stipulations, so we can, uh, come with that?
Please.
So, uh, here's stipulations, annual recertification that the reasonable accommodation continues to be necessary, uh, in more flowery language, that's what the attorney's for. Uh, proposed sign cannot be larger than sixteen square feet, and it must be non-illuminated. Uh, the proposed lighting plan includes as follows, no light intrusion or trespass on neighboring property. Lights can be on from eight AM to ten PM, except for a set of cleanup crew from seven till eleven, but only activated by a motion sensor. And parking as follows, using a map stipulated, revised as follows, thirteen handicap spaces marked, uh, on the, the map that we had been handed last during the open, and then blah, blah, parking spaces, uh, so that's the only thing we have to. And is there any other stipulations you think might be a good idea?
No, I think you've hit them all.
Okay, and I, I basically collected them from-
I do think that we need to put the sunset provision. We need to put a sunset provision.
Oh, yes, a, a sunset provision.
I just didn't want that to get mixed.
Yes, nope, you're absolutely right. And a sunset provision, so-
The recertification.
Uh, we, I, I, it may be on the first one, and a recertification that the reasonable accommodation continues to be necessary with a sunset provision when it's not. All right.
Is there, in reference to, because you've said the federal government doesn't care about anyone around it or the neighborhood.
That's right, they're so far away in Washington.
Exactly. Um, is there anything that can be done about the number of events, or how many the events?
No.
Nope. Even now, there can't be, even with this, the special-
No, it was never-
Special permit, even now, so.
No, it wasn't.
And this has not, this is not to do with that, this application has nothing to do with having events there, or how they use it. It's merely for, in this case, the biggest thing is, we need this many parking spaces, so we can use it as we-
For the members.
For the members. And, and, and the reason is because we have seventy-plus members who are disabled, and we need that accommodation.
I think, yeah, I think you've got a little stimp, Kurt.
So, so, I, I, it's, you know, that's, we're boxed in, that's the only thing we can consider. So, so I think it comes down to, I, I think forty-six with those three out, because I think that's a safety issue. I think Tony agrees, but that's, and then, and two of you don't.
And, 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 and look, and, and, and looking at the site plan, look, I, I could even, I'm not hung up on the number, per se, depending on how they change their parking, they've got this curb which could take two of those spots. So, and then there's a gap over here that, again, I, I would be, it, it, again, the way that their, the map is set up, I'm not gonna get hung up on exactly how many spots.
Oh.
I'm hung up on these three in particular.
Yeah.
So if they subtract the three, then that's fine. If they decide that they can encompass those three outside of, you know, into their map, then it's the forty-nine. I, I'm okay with it either way, I just, again-
How about, how about, how about if we took the closest one away? Just the one? Yeah, you're just throwing something out there.
Yeah, yeah. It, 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 Matt, that's possible.
To get consensus.
Yeah. It, it, it's possible, like I said, I'm, I'm not hung up on the numbers, it's the location, and again, it's, it's how close that is coming in, going from that space.
If we take the closest one away, you have the flexibility of two as opposed to three, maybe that's the right way to do this.
Correct.
And it won't, and it won't distract from the application, so with, I, I can go with taking the closest one away. I don't know what Sean thinks, but-
Well, Sean, uh, yeah, si- uh, just so you know, this dash line here, that dash line is a twenty-five foot setback.
Right.
The regs require, and that, that first one is in that setback, which-
Can I, can I just say that the, uh, emergency services might not have looked at those, uh, as an issue?
Well, uh-
Those spots as an issue, because there, there were no spots, so they might not have really looked at it.
Well, they look at this map, they look at this map.
I understand, but they might not have gone there and looked at it.
I, I agree with you, I don't, I don't think the, uh, emergency services was, uh, concerned with this, but rather, how can we get in and out?
Right, I agree.
Um, you know, safely, accessibility to, you know, get someone who's got an emergency.
Correct.
And that's why I say the traffic engineer, I think they're looking at circulation and getting people out safely, you know, driving forward instead of reversing out. The police are concerned with sightlines and everything, but, um, and that, again, pulling out, pulling out, looking left and right.
Okay.
But, so, yeah, I, okay, you know, forty-eight, I mean, remove that one spot closest to the road.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, good.
Yeah, we can. I like your idea of losing the three.
Um, yeah, I think their consent, well, I think the consensus-
It's just so close to the road.
I know, if we look at our own regulations, removing one would be satisfy our regulations.
I, I, I would agree.
Yeah. So, I, I think-
Remove that first one that's in the setback, that leaves one forty-eight spots.
That's right.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm, I'm good with that.
Okay.
Right.
So, I think, uh, we have four that are okay with that. So, then the last stipulation would be, parking as follows, using map submitted, revised as follows, thirteen handicap spaces as marked, forty-eight spaces modified from forty-nine by deleting the one closest to the road for safety purposes.
Just one?
Yeah.
Yes, just one.
Just one.
Sounds good.
Forty-eight should be enough to satisfy, I think, seventy, if they carpool, you know, and have those people come in. You can get, uh, almost a hundred people, it's ninety-six people or more to, uh, come to the site. Oh, Mr. Tur- (laugh) thank you. There you go.
Go further.
You need a little more gravitas. Um, so, uh, wanna make a-
I got a question.
Yeah.
There's a designation of a wall.
I think they're gonna take that out, on this one right here.
Yeah, oh, I'm looking at-
Oh, that was the original, I think that was the original stone wall that divided the state property.
Okay, but that's not there anymore.
Correct.
Okay. I was gonna say, 'cause I didn't, I, I don't ever remember a wall there, that's why I was like-
Not, not an issue.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Um, I don't think we need to make a motion to, to, no, I mean to have you draw up our stiffs and stuff.
No.
Okay, yeah. So, we're gonna have the, uh, the town attorney and the land use department work on some, uh, resolution with stipulations that we can look at and vote on, on the next meeting. Does that sound good?
All right, motion, motion postponed to October tenth.
All right, uh, motion to continue the-
Second.
Okay, a second from Tony. Uh, any, uh, discussion on the motion? No, all in favor of continuing? Aye.
Aye.
Against? As obtained, no, are you?
We're going to October tenth?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, uh, so it's unanimous, uh, so we're going to October tenth. All right. Uh, so, that does that, eight, there's no new business, nine, tabled items will remain tabled until we get done with our, our application Z dash twenty-four dash forty-two, which is a draft fee schedule. Um, now, ten, commissioner comments and formidable discussion, ten A, ninety-four Old State Road, proposed Canaan Plain Center, Play Center, Nick Nunali, Nunali, is he, is that here? No? Nunali?
I'm not seeing, um, but, no.
Oh. Nobody's, all right, um-
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, uh, there's a motion to adjourn by Mr. Grimes.
I'll second.
Uh-
I'm sorry, who seconded that?
Uh, Tony, Tony seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you, everybody. Meeting ends at, uh, eight seventeen.
Eight seventeen?
Yep.
I actually would like to have a, an executive-